Gentlemen, to the regular City Commission meeting of June 12th, 2018, we'll begin with an invocation from Father Thomas from St. Malthe Apostle Church.
Lord, we are very grateful and thankful to you. You have showered lots of blessings into your life. Every day you give us good strength, good health. You protect us from all evil dangers. And also I pray for this meeting, and I pray for the mayor and his councils, and I pray for the features, various levels of features, who gather here. Lord, we believe that you are the fountain of sublime wisdom. impart your wisdom upon these leaders so that they may be able to make wise decisions for well-being and upliftment of the people who live in the city. We ask all these prayers in the name of the Lord. Amen.
We'll call the meeting to order and do the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Tros, Commissioner President Joffe, Commissioner Vice President Walker, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Long, Commissioner Van Busker, City Attorney Cirillo, City Administrator Lovitzki, Finance Director DiPaolo, Fire Chief Jill Martin, Library Director Keane, Police Chief Licata, Public Works Director Schramm, Recreation Director Leachey.
Commissioners, approval of regular May 22nd, 2018 minutes. You have the chances to review.
I'd like to make a motion approved.
I'll second. We have a motion, we have a second on the regular meeting, May 22nd, minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Finance Director DiPaolo, Treasury is before, please.
Good evening. General Fund has $2,353,192.68, Clean Deposit $32,800.0 cents, Garbage and Trash Fund $1336,526.44, Special Purpose Funds $2,891,109.99, Stormwater Utility Fund $470,857.33, Debt Service Fund $211,636.20, Contingency $5,483,748.0 cents, General Fund Incumferences $179,964.38, Total Off Funds $12,959,835.2 cents.
Commissioners, this has been provided to you previously. Any questions for our Finance Director?
I mean, mine's kind of a combination with Chuck and with the fact that we still see we have our allocated our dredging funds that are still sitting out there. Do we have any information when we're going to be starting that? Chuck, there you go.
Yes, thank you. I contacted the contractor again this morning. He's in contact with FINE. In fact, one bit of good news was he is now working with FINE to perform a project for them further north in the state. So I look forward to this being a means to the impasse to be able to use the Exchange Club property as a transfer site. So we're still working on getting that approved.
Okay, so that hasn't been approved yet.
Yeah, the contractor, he's ready to mobilize when we can make it over that bridge. And once that's done, it'll start.
Where have we previously done the dumping?
In previous years, there was a company that did what's been called a pump and dump. Basically, they pumped out of the canals into trucks and hauled it away. That company is out of business, and there's no firms that do that locally anymore. And it was done in smaller quantities. We're looking at 10,000 to 20,000 cubic yards. So it's not really practical to do that 20 cubic yards at a time into a dump truck. Plus, we pay disposal by weight. So disposing of a dry product versus a wet product will save us money.
Second part of that question, Frank, have we paid them anything yet? Or just, we're just basically, I just want to make sure that obviously that when you look at it, we've set it up there, I just want to make sure we know that we haven't paid anything, anybody, until we get all our approvals.
No, just an open purchase order.
Gotcha. Thanks, Chuck. Anything else for our Finance Director? See anything? Thanks. We now come to public comments and requests regarding agenda items. This is the opportunity where anybody in the audience, if the matter is on the agenda, if you want to address it before the Commission discusses it, feel free to come up. Two of the items are ordinances, and those are going to be public hearings. So if you are here to address either of the ordinances before us today, there will be a public hearing, and you can address us regarding those ordinances at that time. But if you want to come up and address any of the agenda items before the Commission discusses it and maybe takes action, feel free. We'll open the public comment and request regarding agenda items. Come on up. Okay, I don't see anybody, so we'll close that. We have a report from City Administration, City Administrator Lovitzki, report regarding Waste Management, it appears.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Commissioners, our five-year agreement with Waste Management expires 30 September of this year. And the way the agreement is written, we have two three-year renewal options that we can use. So we're going to, we're planning on bringing that back to the Commission to renew the contract for three years. But we were talking to Waste Management about pricing, and they were reluctant to give us the pricing going forward. So I got, we got some pricing. If we were to, we're looking at significant increase from Waste Management. If what they're saying is the cost of, we have so much bulk and so much vegetative waste, and the cost of collecting that waste, it's just, they're proposing up to a $14 a month increase in our garbage fees. And we're paying about $32 right now. And up to 14. Now, that's, that could be negotiated, of course. But that's to keep the service exactly the same, which we have, you know, unlimited bulk every time you have garbage collection, you have bulk pickup. They also are proposing that the city, again, we're not going to ask you to make any decisions tonight. We're going to put this on the June 26th agenda, we're going to have Waste Management here. But there also, an option is to go to the automated cart service. And that would, still, with the automated cart service, then you're limited on how much waste you could put out by the carts. And have a, and have service six days a week. So it would be Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, Wednesday, Saturday. Currently, we don't have any garbage collection on Wednesdays or Saturdays. So they would propose having a garbage truck in here six days a week. And even with that, they propose to have the fees go $4 a month per household. So we're looking, if we continue with Waste Management, we're looking at substantial increases in garbage collection. And to add to that cost, because the whole world of recycling has changed. When we started doing the single-stream recycling, you know, you put everything in one container, that was supposed to be to fix everything. And we were selling the commodities for a lot of money, we were making some profit. Right now, for example, it costs about $95 a ton to process the recyclable materials. What happens when Waste Management picks it up, and that's part of, that's part of our monthly fee. And they take it to the Royder Plant down in Pembroke Pines, and they process, they process the recyclable materials, and they sell it. Right now, it costs about $95 a ton to process it, and they're only selling it for about $85 a ton. So right now, being in the recycling business, we are actually losing money. We're paying more for recycling. So we're going to bring it back for discussion at the June 26th meeting. We'll have Waste Management here. You know, we might have to put this out the bid and see what else is on the market, but that's just to give you a heads up on what's going to happen on June 26th.
Under the item of continued department reports, we have a Friends of a Library State Award presentation. Is that probably you, Mr. Mayor? No, I think the Friends are presenting. Oh, the Friends are going to present. We're giving something to them. Okay.
Well, I know most of you, but I'm Pam Sargent, I'm president of the Lighthouse Point Library Friends Group. And we were very honored to receive this wonderful award at the Florida Library Association Conference in May. And Doreen, Donna Cohen and I traveled, Donna Cohen and I traveled up there to receive it. Kristy was up there. And basically, it was based on our three-year 1965 Society campaign. And in 2014, the Friends Board and the staff looked at some of the needs of the library that weren't covered by the general funds from the city. And then after we determined what that might be through 2015, we went about raising the funds through various means, but mostly through a large dinner auction we had. Our goal was $50,000, and we managed to raise $82,000. So then through 2016, we met with designers, planning, vendors, ordering things. So that brought us up to 2017, where we were able to install four new patron use items. We spent $30,000 of that money, which those four things included six easy chairs, comfortable chairs with computer desktops, end tables with USB and electrical ports. That was about $8,500. A children's room where we now have a computer station, which looks like a boat, which is wonderful, with nautical flags. That was about $5,000. We redid the patron use area where people come in and use the computers. We've got new granite countertops to replace the old Michael ones. And probably our, the thing that we're most proud of is our 1965 Society wall, which highlights donors at various levels that have given money or time to our library. And I know you guys have seen it. It's beautiful. We're really proud of it. We have three panels up there presently, but have, we have three more, so our hope is that it will grow, and donors can upgrade their level and go to a different little, you know, the marine, we have the starfish, and different fish at different levels. What I think really is most remarkable, which also was part of this award, is that we have 20 sea stars on that wall that represent 20 volunteers who have given more than 20 years of time to the library, which really is remarkable, and it helps to make our library special and living in a special town. And those hours are based, if you really turn that into what it's worth money-wise, the hours that they have donated just in 2015 and 16, over 10,000 hours, which if you use the rate that the government uses of $22 an hour for volunteer work, means that those volunteers saved us $220,000. So we're very proud of our volunteers, and we're also very proud that we were able to receive this award. So we're encouraging people in town to become a friend of the library, $25 a year. And we're hoping that we'll just keep going and be able to keep doing the things that we're proud of. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner. Friends of the library continue to dazzle with their ability to raise money and keep that library flourishing. So I was there working today, so I'm very much appreciative of having our Lighthouse Point Library. There are no reports of the City Attorney, no reports from standing committees. Our next Planning and Zoning meeting is June 18th, 2018. Our next Code Enforcement meeting is June 19th, 2018. Community appearance, June 21st, 2018. Special Magistrate will meet July 11th, 2018, and Marine Advisory will meet August 2nd, 2018. Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is the appeal of new business, but our City Clerk, who's source of all good ideas in the city many times, had the idea that because we have our Honorary John Trudell here today, that we move that up. The agenda, is there any objection to doing that? Giving the man his due? Any objection? So by consensus, we will move to Agenda Item Number Six, which is a resolution naming and designating the field at Frank McDonough Park as John Trudell Field, and Mayor Tros has the honors.
Commissioners, thank you very much. John has met and watched our city. And personally, when my son was first entering sports, John was a world of guidance on how to coach a series of boys that were running around like a bunch of bumblebees. And to help me in my learning curve, John actually put me with a coach to coach my son in soccer, who happens to be here tonight, Kenton. Thank you for coming. And he was Evan's first soccer coach. And I learned a lot about coaching from that, and I learned a lot about coaching from John. And the most important thing John taught me about coaching boys and girls in the co-ed leagues was patience, which, as those of you know me, I am not always the most patient person around. So with that, Commissioners, I guess I'll turn it back over to you, Commission President, and if we can get a motion to read them. I've got a presentation for John when we're done.
I'll make a motion to read. Second. Make a motion to read in a second.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida, naming and designating the field at Frank McDonough Park as John Trudell Field in recognition of John Trudell's over 40 years as the city's Parks and Recreation Director and for his dedication to family and life in the city and to the children of the city of Lighthouse Point, providing authority to the city administration to take all actions necessary to implement the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date.
The Commissioners, Commissioner Long.
I know I wouldn't let this moment go by, John. I'm probably a little different than most people here, because why, you may have grown up here, Kyle, through the recreation program possibly, I know you did Deerfield as well. But when we moved down in 1969, we got involved in recreation. John, I guess, was just getting started as a part-timer, and Dan Witt was, of course, Recreation Director, and I think we all know the name. A few know the person. I had the opportunity to know Dan, and a great person, great family, and John was always there. John was like the constant in Lighthouse Point. If you went to a park, any park, at the time, pretty much had Dan Witt, Frank McDonough was still a lot of sand spurs and mess, and John was instrumental in getting that moving and being where it is today, and Dan Witt Park opening up that. But John was always there, and still is there. And just a couple of weeks ago, I had my son out there practicing baseball. John just happened to walk by and gave Andrew a few tips. So he's always a teacher, always a coach. You know, went to Pompano High School, but coached at Deerfield, could never figure that thing out. Loves his Hurricanes. And I wish we could do more. I wish we could almost name the city after John, because he's represented Lighthouse Point for all these years. I love him. He was a wonderful guy and meant a lot to my family over the years. So I'm fully in support of this resolution.
Commissioners, anything else? I thought he was going to tell the story. Didn't he leave you at some park?
He left me at Ocean Grove.
I usually hear that story too, so I was.
Yeah, I was trying to put it out, because John did leave me at Ocean Grove when he was still a part-timer.
Hopefully, I acted it, but.
So to say, but, you know, supposed to count off. I don't know what happened. It was me and another girl, so I guess we were the ones who were, you know, soulmates on that day.
I just have one other comment to make about John. John and I would talk about a lot of different things, this is before I was even a Commissioner, and we talked about, you know, ideas, concepts, how to manage children and everything. And he really, he really did a great job, you know, giving me some guidance on it in a lot of different areas. But the one thing I knew that I really must be doing something right, and AJ's here tonight, when John asked me to coach his son AJ and coach pitch baseball, I knew I must have done something right. And John, you know, John was there every game. If he wasn't rooting, he was behind the plate umpiring, so, and AJ, he never showed you any favoritism, did he? No. So, but John's been great for our community, and he continues to be great for our community. You can see him everywhere, see him out walking every morning, wave to him. Most mornings, he's out there chugging along, doesn't even pay attention to who's waving at him.
Great. I'll be really brief. I haven't had as long a history as John, because I think one of the first things I did was, when I was a Commissioner, was actually vote on his successor, Becky. But in the little time I have known John, I've known him to be a class act, which is entirely consistent with everything everybody's told me. And the way I know that to be true is, it takes a really good person and a strong person to have a balance between wanting to stay involved, but allowing other ideas and other ways of doing things flourish. And I think from everything I've observed, although John, if you ask him a question, he gives you a direct answer, and I appreciate that, John has been able to strike that chord masterfully. So I appreciate his continued involvement in the city, and I think as long as he's in town, I think all of us who are up here are going to continue to seek his guidance. So that's what I'll say about John Trudell. But again, anybody else want to say anything?
I'll just offer a different perspective. I didn't raise my children in Lighthouse Point. Raised them out in West Broward. And then you take a look at Lighthouse Point, the kind of asset that this community had with John Trudell is amazing. You've got the continuity, you've got a role model, you've got a sense of history, all the things that do not exist in other communities existed here in this Recreation Department because of John Trudell. And I cannot tell you how important that is, to have that kind of a figure in your community. And I wish I would have raised my children in Lighthouse Point. If I'd have known it was possible, I may have done it at the time. But that's the kind of individual, the kind of asset in this community, that makes this community the unique, special place that it is. So whatever we do for John Trudell, it's not enough, as far as I'm concerned, because he's a beacon of leadership and continuity for this city that you cannot do without.
Also, Commissioner Johnson.
I've known John for a long time, since I'm one of the old timers here. And he was there and guided my son when he was little, and he and his coaches worked him into an athlete of sorts, because first year, I remember in T-ball, he thought he was supposed to be weeding when he went out into the field. I'd look out there, and he'd be sitting there pulling the weeds and not waiting for the ball. And when the ball did come, he'd just kind of go, hmm, you know? But thanks to John and the great coaches, he went past that, as did all his little friends, and it was a great time. And we appreciate everything you did and the years and years you did it. You got wet, you got dry, you got hot, you got cold, but you were always there. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Busker, finish us off.
Well, okay, well, I'll finish it off, but I'll just say this, is that it's amazing the thing that Mike said it and Sandy said it, is that the fact is that they, they went ahead and they were the coach, or John was the coach of your son and you, and of my kids and of my wife, and the fact that you've left a legacy, I think is a huge word for me. And it's a legacy and an honor to bestow this, I believe, upon you. And as everybody has sat up here, I think that it's just not enough, the legacy that you've left for this city. So thank you, John.
Well, it's the honors, Commissioner. Motion to pass, please. No motion? Second. No motion for a second on Resolution 2018-2194, John Trudell Field. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I have the permits in his house and enough memories, so we have one more that will get to dust more often and everything. Now, he's retired, he has extra time, right, John?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
It's really an honor. I've worked here for 41 years full-time, and the kids and the parents in the community are very cool workers. I want to thank my wife. My niece's dinner was like nine o'clock. And I want to thank Becky, who's our new Recreation Director, she's been doing a great job. She was one of our little star players when she was younger, growing up. So she kind of knows the routine here in the city. And looking at the mayors up there, I see there's 10 of them. I think I served under nine of them. Again, my name on the park is fabulous. It makes me feel good to know that I'll be in the same group with Dan Witt, Frank McDonough, and my friend, Humbert.
Commissioners, we'll now return to our regularly scheduled agenda. First item of new business, appeal of Planning and Zoning Board decision, May 1st, 2018, drop dock variance for address located 3750 Northeast 31st Avenue. City Attorney Cirillo.
Mr. President, Members of the City Commission, this is an appeal filed pursuant to Section 42-284 of the City's Land Development Code. There was a decision made by Planning and Zoning Board on May 1st, where they considered the merits of a variance application for a dock at 3750 Northeast 31st Avenue. The meeting was attended by three Planning and Zoning Board members. The City's Code Of Ordinances require a majority of the entire board to vote in support of a variance, and because the vote was two in favor, one against, it resulted in denial of the variance. You have in the backup all the information, including the letter of appeal requesting tonight's hearing, as well as Planning and Zoning Board minutes, the application, staff reports, the material provided, the Planning and Zoning Board minutes, and the two sections of the code relating to appeals and docks, peers, and filings on canals. You sit this evening as a Board of Appeals to consider the appeal based on the record as established before the Planning and Zoning Board. So the attorney here, Dean of Ms. Gray, is here present on behalf of the applicant. She will make a presentation, and you can ask her any questions you would like. And at the end of the appeal, you will make a determination whether to appeal the decision or to do something different with what the Planning and Zoning Board decided.
Great, thank you for coming this evening. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Deana Gray, 200 East Broward Boulevard, with Greensboro Modern Land Use Attorney, here on behalf of the property owner. And I have, what I brought with me tonight is the PowerPoint presentation that was shown to the Marine Advisory Board and the Planning and Zoning Board. Before I walk you through that, just, I'd like to just give you just a quick, brief history of the background that helped lay out how we got here today. The, this property, the original home on this lot was, was torn down, and a new home was constructed. It was, it's that 7,000-plus-square-foot home that was constructed on the property. In connection with that construction, the contractor submitted a permit application for the existing dock behind the home. The dock that's existing there has been there for 26 years, and it was issued a permit back in 1992 by the city and by the Army Corps and all the regulatory bodies that were required. The permit application, though, to repair the dock was rejected, and the property owner was informed that a variance was required because the dock extends into the intercoastal waterway further than what the city code allows. For some reason, there isn't any record of a variance being given 26 years ago, so we have moved forward with requesting a variance application. So in the timing there, we submitted a variance application in November, and just due to the timing of the submission of the application, the next Marine Advisory Board meeting was in February, so we were on the February 1st Marine Advisory Board, and we received unanimous approval. And then we moved forward to the March 1st Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and there was a full board there. And at that meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board had requested that we provide a water depth analysis. There isn't any standard in the code for what the water depth analysis should actually really show, but we, in the spirit of cooperation, of course, we got the water depth analysis, and I requested a continuance so that we can do that. And then we reconvened and moved forward on April 3rd. At the April 3rd Planning and Zoning Board meeting, there were only three Planning and Zoning Board members that were present. So at that, that would mean that we would need, I would need a unanimous approval, because we would need a majority affirmative vote of the entire board. So I requested a continuance until the following Planning and Zoning Board meeting, in the hopes of having a full board, which was on May 1st. And on May 1st, there were three Planning and Zoning Board members present, but moved forward. Two of the three Planning and Zoning Board members voted yes, one voted no. So now we're here, up to speed, I'm appealing the decision. So now we're here, up to speed on appealing the decision. So now to move forward to the PowerPoint presentation, this is exactly what was shown to the Planning and Zoning Board. There's one additional slide at the end which has the water depth analysis, but everyone has seen that also. So there's no new information that's being presented to you tonight. This is for the Hyman residence, which is at 3750 Northeast 31st Avenue. And the request was to permit to resurface or repair the existing wood dock in the same footprint, on the same pilings. At the last Planning and Zoning Board meeting, it was brought to my attention before, actually, the meeting, that there was concern by the city that some of the pilings may need to be repaired. So I have, or replaced. I had represented that the intention was for them to be on the same pilings. And if it's determined that the pilings need to be replaced, then they'll comply with doing that. When we had first permitted, the contractor thought that they could wrap them or put pile wraps on it. But the building department informed us that the code had changed and they're not permitted. So if they need to be replaced, then they'll comply with replacing them.
Ms. Gray, can I stop right there? Because that was, that's kind of one of my big concerns about hearing it. So if it is determined later on that the pilings need to be replaced, my understanding is that you would need to go through this variance process all over again to put the pilings back in the same place. So if your client is willing to assume that risk with full disclosure, that in all candor, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do it all again, understanding that the city could go out tomorrow and make a determination that the pilings need to be replaced. If I hear that you're willing to do that, that helps me make my decision. I don't know where I would fall, but I wanted to put that question because it's not an easy question.
Right. And now, in reviewing the backup further and reviewing the Army Corps permit that was submitted, and it's that huge pile of backup materials that you're given in there, the Army Corps permit and also the subsequent permitting information that explains that if you are replacing the piling or the dock in the exact same footprint, then we wouldn't have to go back to the Army Corps as long as it's in the same footprint. So my understanding from the marine consultant is they could pull out the piling and then put the new one in the same hole, so to speak. Like, it wouldn't be a new dredging permit or Army Corps permit. Now, if they wanted to expand it or move the pilings anywhere, then they would not, they would have to go back to the Army Corps. We would have to come back to you.
Okay. Does the administration agree with that? That if they had to replace the pilings, they would not have to come back for another permit or variance before the city? If it's in the same footprint?
Yeah, the variance is for the distance requirement for the code. So the variance is to allow the dock to go out so far conditioned on the design of the dock. So you could, if you were going to grant, do this this evening, allow that to occur as part of any variance that, given the license to fix or replace the pilings as part of that. Because the variance is to go, to be a variance from the limitation on how far out they can go from the back of the property.
So I want to make sure I'm clear.
Yeah, so they would not need, if they could, if you approved the variance tonight, it's to allow the dock to go out that certain distance. So if they're going out that certain distance and using the same footprint, they would not need to come back to you just because they need to replace pilings.
Okay.
That record was made before the Planning and Zoning Board.
That's what I thought.
There was a recommendation made by Ms. Gray that if they had to replace the pilings, they could. And I think that was part of the discussion of Planning and Zoning Board, that if they had to replace pilings, could they do something different, which was less of a variance. But that's for you all to kind of hammer through as part of the...
Sorry to interrupt, but I thought that was...
That's okay. So definitely valid question. And basically, the reason why I bring it up is really to give more assurance that they really, they can't move it without having to go back to the Army Corps. So they're not going to go shifting things around after they get the variance, because then they wouldn't be in compliance with all the permits that they've already received.
Okay.
So here is an aerial, so the red, the red block is my client's property. And, sorry, it's kind of small there, but you can see the dock. And if you look all to the north, all the properties to the north and the properties to the south have similar docks that extend out the same or very similar. Some of them, some of the docks are actually, most of those docks are actually bigger than my client's dock. And as you can see on there, so this, the permit was issued by the city in 1992, Army Corps in 1992, the counting permit. Then they went back and also have the Broward County Environmental Resource License. And that also, if it gives you more reassurance, and that license, which is in your backup, it also states that it's for replacement of the dock, and which would include pilings in the same footprint. So they can't move it. Now, this is the site plan that was submitted. And it also shows that they are proposing to put the same dock in the same footprint. And as I was explaining, that they're not requesting to expand it or enlarge it in any way, because basically they can't unless they went back to the Army Corps. And if they went back to the Army Corps to request that, then we would have to then come back to you to ask if they were going to enlarge it or, you know, set it out any further. Now, this is a photo of the dock, which was really from the beginning of when we started here. This is about November, just after Hurricane Irma, so it's in even worse condition. They did secure the, some boards had flown off because of the hurricane, but then they secured down the loose boards just for safety precaution. And they're trying to sell the house. So it's not only safety, but it's also an aesthetic reason, is when they're showing the house, at that caliber of a home, it's expected that there would be a dock behind it and that it would, you know, be in good condition. So on the next, the next slide here, this is one of the pages from the water depth analysis that's in your, in your backup. So I had spoken with several marine consultants to just get an idea, I'm not a voter, just to get an idea of what is really needed. Because the Planning and Zoning Board that requested the water depth analysis, they were looking for three and a half to four feet. When I did some research and checked into, you know, how much, you know, how much the boat has a, how much draw, thank you, the water draw that the boat has, there was varying responses. I could have a 35-foot sailboat that could have a seven-foot draft. There was a difference of opinion at the Planning and Zoning Board. But in my conversations with the marine consultants, and in particular, I had spoken with the Marine Industries Association of South Florida. And basically, I was, you know, I was explaining that really that draw depends on the size, the type of the boat, and that it could vary. But even if, even if we were going with three and a half to four feet, as the Planning and Zoning Board member had wanted, you would still need an additional one to two feet to, for the boat to actually maneuver. So the draw, you have the draw, and then the, you need the water underneath to actually let the boat maneuver in the water. It's my understanding, too, that you have air conditioning units or filters that are at the bottom of the boat that draw up water also. So you don't want it too close to the floor of the water floor, because it would suck up debris and muck. And the same thing, you still need a certain amount of water in addition to the draw when you start the engines, because it draws up water and it won't be on the, into the muck.
Now, I was wondering why we cared what size of boat went behind there, but now I think I, now I think, now I think I get it. You don't want to get it.
My job, that's right. It's way too small to appreciate.
But it's damage to the, it's damage to the intercoastal. It's possible damage to the intercoastal. And the boat.
And the boat.
More to the boat. Yeah, you don't want to suck the silt in because of the issue.
Well, if somebody's dug out, if somebody wants to do that behind their house, one could argue it, but go ahead.
So basically, our position is, is we're really asking for the minimum variance here. And that this is a perfect example of a non-self-imposed hardship, because they requested, they went through the process, they got all the permits that were required. We don't know why 26 years ago, why a variance wasn't requested, or if maybe there just isn't one in the records. And if there was one, we just, we don't know. We're asking for your consideration tonight. If you have any questions?
Do you have the records of the requests of the Corps of Engineers or the, and they're dated 1992?
Yes.
So presumably, you know, you can demonstrate in 1992, due diligence was done to get the proper information to request that variance.
Yes, and I've submitted all of that to the state.
Okay, I was looking for the dates, I couldn't find them, but...
Yeah, I saw it.
I can help if you'd like.
No, that's all right. I just, if it's in here.
I saw it, too.
Okay.
I'd like to tell you what page it's on.
Tell you what page it's on.
There you go.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, I got it. Miami Regent Field Office.
Any other questions? Any questions? Discussion?
And just to verify, you're just looking to replace the existing dock? Same place, same footprint, same length, same distance from your seawall as it's currently being matched?
And I think the concerns of the one member who I thought raised some valid points regarding the pilings, your client has basically acknowledged that if we determine that the pilings need to be replaced, you'll do it. I don't know either way, that's not our department, that's administration, you know, that's code enforcement administration. I have, you know, no idea what the state is, other than what's in the record. But it seems like that concern is being addressed. I think if I remember the record, the concern was more bringing it in or putting it out if they had to bring it in closer. So I feel pretty comfortable that we put them right back where they've been for 26 years.
Yeah, I mean, personally, for me, obviously, having met with Ms. Gray, I feel the same way. I think that going over all this information, if we're putting back a, obviously, a sound dock that's, you know, engineered properly and put back the right correction, as long as in the same process, you know, same way that it was approved in 1992, that we permitted in 1992, somehow there was an issue with how we missed it or whatever happened there, I think that there should be no issue here and we should just move on past this.
I agree also, because we're, you're not changing anything, you're just putting back what was there. And if something was inadvertently left out or could have been, been lost, I mean, back then, I think we have to go forward with it.
And the new boards would be, the new, since it is a permitted project, I mean, when the boards go in, they will be inspected, correct?
You have to get them building permits and that. What they need is to pass zoning so they can get the permit.
But you have to make sure that if, that we say that those pilings have to be replaced, that they have to replace the pilings. That's part of it.
Yeah, it's my understanding that there is a couple of pilings that have wraps on them, so I believe there might be two or three. And I'm, I don't know, I'm not, I don't know what the condition would be, as I'm qualified to determine that. But I think that's where the issue became, because the client found out a contractor learned that we can't do the wraps.
Commissioner, on.
Yeah, it looks like the conditions, especially along this area of the intercoastal, has not changed dramatically as far as the depth of water. It's been kind of consistent here, which is why this was created. It's the same hardship we had back then that they have now. In regard to the pilings, I know it was about probably 15 years ago, we said, you've got to stop doing the wraps and get them replaced. So that was a code change we did, would have been before or after, you know, this was put in. But whether it was done with or without a permit, that doesn't matter. You got them wrapped, they probably should be replaced. If you're going to invest that money in a dock like this, you've got to do it right. So I would encourage you that if you have any bad pilings that need to be replaced, you've got to replace them, force them the same footprint.
Mr. Mocker?
I'll just add one comment. Looks to me like this is another example of bureaucracy run amok. I mean, it should not be this hard. All they want to do is fix what's existing there. It should have been done a year ago.
He who gets the most votes doesn't always win, either.
No, I know. Okay. Can we, we did pass it then?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appeal.
Okay.
Well, that's fine. Approve the appeal that would result in the granting of the variance requested.
That's what I was going to go with.
I'll second that.
The motion, can we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass five zero.
Thank you.
Got a question for the attorney? Or attorney? Question of the City Attorney Cirillo.
Yeah. I'll limit that number of questions I can answer.
Okay. Well, hopefully, it's within that. If someone was to come back and had a previous variance...
You'd still have to come back if you were redoing the whole thing again, wouldn't you?
Well, no, if you, if you get a variance, it depends on what the variance is meant for.
But if you make any change, which would be...
If you're going to change it, if you're going to change it from what was approved, then you might have to come back in and get variance. Because remember, the variance, if there was one, for tonight, for example, you granted a variance from the distance requirement up to this distance where the dock is. So in 15, 20 years, if they want to come in and they want to replace the dock and they don't want to do the same thing, they have to go through the variance process again. So you're granting the variance based on the application that was submitted.
Maybe if you really ducked the whole thing and you're an inch difference...
Any difference on that.
So that's what I'm saying, it would be almost...
I mean, inch or two, that's negligible, but your point is if they shifted it out a few feet or maybe even shifted it, changed the, even if they didn't go any further, but they changed the angle and the slope of what they were doing out there, could result in the need of variance. It depends on what they're asking for. But you, tonight, your variance was to give a variance from the limitations from how far out they can go in the intercoastal, based on the application that was submitted for the same dock. If they deviate from that in future, they may be determined later they need a variance. Let's go changes between now and then.
I assume we have an adequate record to ensure the same, it keeps the same footprint? Okay. All right. Moving on, we have our twelve ordinances. First up, we have a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending Chapter 42, Section 42-344, as advertised on the sunset on June 2nd, 2018. City Attorney Cirillo.
Mr. President, members of the City Commission, this is second reading and public hearing of a proposed ordinance. I amend Chapter 42 Land Development Code, Section 42-344, to add to two-story townhouses as a conditional use in the RM 16 zoning district. It creates a new Section 42-361.1, which provides criteria for review of such conditional uses. You approved this ordinance on first reading and public hearing at your last meeting. Since then, it did go to the Planning and Zoning Board at its June 5th meeting, and the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval of the ordinance here this evening. So it's here before you for public hearing and second reading.
Motion to read?
Second.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida, amending Chapter 42 Land Development Code, Article 4, Zoning, Division 4, District Regulations, Section 42-344, RM 16, 4 Family Residential District of the City of Lighthouse Point, Code of Ordinances to add a conditional use for two-story townhouses in the RM 16 zoning district, creating a new Section 42-361.1, additional conditional use criteria for two-story townhouses in RM 16, to provide conditional use criteria for such developments and to authorize modifications and waiver standards, providing for complex survivability, codification, and ineffective date.
This is a public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to address the commission before it magically transforms this ordinance into law, this is your opportunity. We'll hit them public hearing. Come forward, you have three minutes, state your name and your address, and address the Seeing none, hearing none. Oh, Mr. Benz, I was surprised, I paused.
A short pause.
As in, it's for dramatic effect.
I was waiting for somebody else's name.
Leo Benz, 3000 Northeast 31st Avenue. On the Kabachi Development Project, you've all maybe read this, but you haven't had the time. But notwithstanding my objections to the multiple variances, I see that two-story building with the hip roof could be more attractive than a three-story townhouse to the west. Another plus is that there will be no owner's cars backing out on the Lighthouse Drive or 39th Street or 22nd Avenue. Be real traffic... or 39th Street or 22nd Avenue, a real traffic benefit to everyone. I would also hope that the balconies and splash pools with the five-foot wall could look better to all of our citizens than parked cars and garage doors. As to the conditional use ordinances being considered, I must say that they are the most confusing and complicated ordinances I have seen in years. And I would like to suggest some additional conditions for your conditional uses. Section 42, 361-2, criteria D8, be modified by deleting the last sentence. I don't believe guest parking should be allowed in this townhouse driveway, which is only 24 feet wide. They do have guest parking in the setbacks off 39th Street. The requirements of the CAB and the Planning and Zoning Board be included, and that the HOA Declaration of Covenants include the following, that the declaration must be approved by the city before recording and before any unit can be occupied, and it shall include a provision that the declaration cannot be rescinded, modified, or terminated without the approval of the city. The developer shall plant and maintain an approved hedge of at least two feet in height and two feet portion of the city right-of-way for utility easement that are contiguous to the property line, driveways excepted. The occupants will not be permitted to use the balconies to hang towels, clothing, or any objects on the balcony railings, nor place any objects whatsoever that show above the balcony railing. The occupants will also, the occupants will not be permitted to build or place any pool or health equipment or play equipment or any other objects in their yards or pools that will be visible above the five-foot wall. And another request, that the developer shall, without moving existing trees, build or modify the sidewalks suitable to the city on all sides of the property, except the south border, on single-family homeowners. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leo.
Anybody else on this ordinance?
George Cassis, 3312 Northeast 29th Avenue. I don't know if this has anything to do with it, and I apologize if I'm speaking on a turn. Questioning, since we're putting in your, they're proposing two six-unit townhomes, if I'm not mistaken, in the HOA, is there any way to make sure these are not used for VRBO? Or not? I just wanted to, with everything that's going on with the statement, I know Glenn's very astute to the.
The problem is, the state has preempted unto itself the regulation of short-term rentals. So they would have to comply with our transient rental regulations, but we could not prohibit it, to my knowledge.
That's an interesting question.
But given, given that it's a homeowners association, that would be a different issue, and that would be up to a lawyer that is familiar with homeowners association to debate that the city could not do.
Is there a way, and I don't mean to be, I just, I've already had two VRBOs around my home, one on one side, one on the other, is there a way that any type of multifamily that has an HOA, to hopefully put in their covenants to where they cannot rent for, or if we have the ability to, I am not sure, for them to do this project to help our city, is to not have a more than one renter a year, kinda like when I lived at Palmare Coral Key?
That could be a condition of approval that might be addressed to planning and zoning.
But is that?
Do what? Well, I don't know, I mean, we can, I think that can be discussed, the planning and zoning board, you know? The issue we have is our inability to specifically regulate vacation rentals. Our hands are tied for the legislative preemption.
We're not regulating.
No, that's, if we, if we could develop a policy that would require, in order to get approval, that the HOA prohibit, then we are in essence regulating it, even if it's not directly.
We could always ask. Well, I think my point is, though, if planning and zoning made it a condition, that it be part of the HOA documents, that might be a different issue.
That's the city's still involved in.
Yeah, I mean, I'd wanna explore that legally. I have concerns about us doing indirectly what we cannot do directly.
But currently, right now, an HOA can control that.
I believe in HOA, they can develop their own documents, and they can provide their own rules, many of which were listed by Mr. Benz in his comments, that could go into HOA documents as well, that they can enforce.
But, but my question is, and those are all, that's a very, actually a very interesting idea and notion, but I don't recall seeing that as a condition.
We don't have anything in here that has anything relating to HOA declarations.
Many HOAs have that in there. And once the HOA has it, you know, it's up to them. But my question is, how could, how could, how could planning and zoning impose that as a condition if it isn't part, let's assume it was legal for a second. How could planning and zoning, from a, from a state's standpoint, how could planning and zoning impose that as a condition if it's not a criteria in our, in the ordinance before us tonight?
I think that could be an issue for Planning and Zoning Board, because we, now, you can go with the purpose and intent of this, to establish and provide for exceptional, you know, architectural and development and uses. It says, "The intended section is to acknowledge two-story townhouses may be appropriate if designed to high architectural standards, emphasize its quality, minimize its mass, create visual interest, blends in the context adjacent neighborhood, and provides amenities for its residents." But impose, requiring, having Planning and Zoning Board impose a requirement in an HOA of certain things, I think would go beyond the scope of that of this code. And, you know, I could see how we would want to have, the Planning and Zoning Board could require the HOA to have declarations that are consistent with the conditional use approvals, because, for example, the parking is to be used, the garages are to be used for parking, okay? So we wanna make sure that's in your HOA docs, those kind of things, because that is one of the things that they're specifically allowed to look at and weigh in.
I understand, but I still, I just wanna make sure we're doing this, because I think we got something here, and I won't beat the horse. Go ahead.
If I might, I mean, I think what we ought to do is finish public comment, then you all can discuss it.
Okay.
Because, you know, that way we get the ideas, and we can talk about it in the record.
Go ahead. It really, I only bring it up because the three-story townhomes to the west, I know, have been used as an annual rental, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think they're used as VRBO. But when that VRBO does come in, it's a very busy intersection at that light. Right now, we need to be careful of the safety of our children, safety of our community. Sorry about that. Okay. And, so, that's the main issue at hand, is that we do have a community of pretty much year-rounders. So if there's anything, that's, please bring that up, and just consider our, our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public would like to address the ordinance? I know representatives of the developer here, would they want to address and speak to the issue of HOA docs?
Can I say something?
Just so it's clear, just out of the records, I'll go with you firsthand.
Good evening, Duane Dickerson, on behalf of the property owner, attorney with the law firm, Denae Miskel Backman, offices at 14 Southeast 4th Street in Buffalo, Raton, Florida. I'm happy to report that the HO docs will prohibit the VRBOs.
Well, that was easy.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, granted, that's on that specific application.
Run that by.
He stands, the context of the conversation during the public comments appears to have been related to what's gonna happen with this property. The doc, he's representing on behalf of the developer, but they're going to put that restriction in their HOAs, but there's nothing in this code that will say that they have to do that. I'm sure that you understood that. Passing by me, it's still.
It's still gonna go through.
Development to development issue, and it can be raised, and it can be discussed as part of staff review, as part of DRC, and as part of Planning and Zoning Board and public comment, and, you know, again, HOA docs, I think, having a requirement or a condition that the HOA docs have provisions that match the conditions of approval, I think it's consistent, whether it's in this ordinance or not, Planning and Zoning Board can do that.
And we say, VRBO, you're talking about all sort of vacation rentals, transient rentals, as things that fall into the category, which of course we're discussing, short-term rentals.
Yes, sir. And, and I believe your city attorney's correct, tonight is, of course, the text amendment, but I felt it was important to at least let you know what our intentions were, and as we go through the process of the site plan approval, if we need to reiterate that, we can do that. But I felt it just, for informational purposes tonight, because it's not on your agenda for the text amendment, but that will be something we will be doing as we go through the site plan process.
Hopefully not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further on public comment? I'm sorry, public here. We'll close public hearing. Commissioners, discussion?
Well, I guess I'll go first. Having spoke to the attorney for the project, I think that, again, we come back to the old, I'll call it the Leo Benz issue here, that obviously we have a project, we have, we have a certain set of guidelines that we already have out there at ordinances. However, though, I think what needs to be built there, or what we're looking for architecturally wise nowadays, might be a little different from when these ordinances were set out, and having some sort of, when I saw this tonight from Leo, I was a little thrown off, but the idea that, hey, we're allowing P&amp;Z some leeway to make some, an educated and what is best for the city type decisions, what the Planning and Zoning Board is meant to do. I think that having them come up and mention something about the VRBOs or the short-term rentals, also maybe adding in and including some of the little things that are here, I believe are important. But I also wanna make sure that, before we do any of this, I wanna make sure that we understand that it's important, safety, as far as I'm concerned, you know what my stance is, safety of our residents and the people pulling out on the 39th Street, and coming on Lighthouse Point Drive, and where they're pulling out, and making sure that they're doing the right thing. I wanna make sure that we're not too dense there also, for our fire trucks and our rescue trucks to come in. 24 feet is not a lot. That's a skinny, skinny area to get down, and, you know, I hope that we never have to have that issue, but obviously having a tight, narrow passageway does cause somewhat of a canyon effect, but it also causes an issue for our fire apparatus and/or access points in there. So just kinda keep that in mind. But again, I do believe that having planning and zoning on this, and allowing them the opportunity to see what we could come to, is important.
Commissioner Goss, you had a question?
I was gonna talk about the vacation rentals, having dealt with a homeowners association on the issue, but that's taken care of. But I'll comment on the whole thing, as long as I have my turn. I think that with the accommodations that they've made, and with what we're asking them, that I don't see how we can make a better use of that property, really. I see so many pluses there that I can't see the negatives in any way standing in the way of us doing this. I think that it's a, it'll be a beautiful addition to that corner that's always been awful. And as long as the fire trucks can get down there, which they can, I'm sure, and they have a way in and out, so it's not like they're gonna get boxed in there, I would think that that would be, you know, because I can understand, that would definitely be a concern if we thought the fire trucks couldn't get in there. But I personally think that it's an asset for us.
My, my question is, again, well, first of all, HOA documents can change. So, we gotta keep that, we gotta keep that in mind, they can be changed. But this.
However, just keep in mind on that, if they change them and allow something that's inconsistent with the approval of the city, the city can enforce its development order. If there's, for example, if there's a condition of approval about parking, because the parking is allowed to be one of those waivers, so one of the conditions is, yeah, you can have the waiver for the parking, but it has to be X, Y, and Z, so the HOA says X, Y, and Z, and then 10 years later, they think they're gonna be smart, and they change it to A, B, C, and now we start seeing A, B, C out there, we can say, you're violating your condition of approval, and we cite them for it.
Okay. But Mike, and this, what actually is before us is an ordinance that obviously will affect this property, but could possibly affect other projects, as long as this ordinance is on the books. So, my, the thing I'm still trying to conceptualize and understand, Mike, is what it sounds like you're saying is, my ultimate question is, do we need to put something in here explicit regarding use of the, use of the prop, use of, use of, as a condition, the use of the proposed plan or property must be consistent with the residential nature of the area? Or something like that? Because I just, I'm having a trouble seeing how, if this is passed tonight, and it goes to P&amp;Z, and there's a discussion about this renting, whether it's not short-term, but maybe six months, or a minimum or something, without having something explicit in this ordinance, how is P&amp;Z able to impose that as an enforceable condition?
I don't think you can put in here that as a conditional use, you can prohibit short-term rentals.
But, but P&amp;Z can impose that?
No, they're not gonna impose it. They're gonna, they're gonna suggest it, they're gonna work with the applicant.
Okay, okay, it has to be wrong.
The applicant's gonna come forward and understand the concerns of the city about uses on the property. You know, but, but I, again, I don't think we can do indirectly, but we can't do directly under the statute.
Okay. And then my other, my other question was, thing, good points that Leo brought up, like striking that last sentence, guest parking may be located in the parking bay, parking lot, or driveway. By passing this ordinance, if we were to leave that provision in there, because it's in there, planning and zoning, if they wanted to, then could make a condition of that, of the use, that there not be parking located in the parking bay, parking lot, or driveway, right? That, they could make, they could in essence strike that provision or not allow that with respect to this.
This is permissive.
This is permissive.
This is not, so, so they don't have a right to use the parking bay, parking lot, or driveway, but if a design could come before them where that was functional, and that it fit into the use of the property, this allows Planning and Zoning Board to consider such a design. This particular design may not be useful for that, but if you might get a design somewhere where they're able to demonstrate that guest parking in a, because, for example, guest parking may be in a parking lot, right? That makes sense, right? Or driveway, maybe it's something, the site can be designed where it's wide enough to have parallel parking, or whatever the case may be, on-site on a driveway. We just don't know, but this gives the flexibility to allow guest parking in different ways.
I guess my question, I didn't probably articulate it.
Sorry.
No, I probably didn't articulate it well, and shows my, my lack of knowledge of land use law, which is why I'm not.
And we have our planner here, if you wanna ask third questions about.
I like rilling you about it, but, no, I'll ask the planner, go ahead.
As I like, as I'm supposed to say, I'm just a lawyer, I can only tell you what I would say, just say.
I guess my question is, if planning and, this, let's just use this property for an example, because it's, this proposal, this is no, no secret. If they came to Planning and Zoning Board with a, with a use that allowed for parking in the driveway, for example, and they contemplated that in the proposal, could Planning and Zoning say, okay, we're going to approve your project, everything you want, but we are gonna approve it, but you're not allowed to park in the driveway?
I'm gonna defer to the attorney.
Okay.
That question's different than what you asked.
And that's why I wanted to ask it again.
If the design doesn't work, and they wanna come in and say, yes, we wanna park in the driveway, they can say, no, that design doesn't work, or it doesn't meet, by allowing the parking in the driveway, it doesn't meet the intent of the code for superior architectural and amenities and everything else, so no, we're not gonna allow it. I think this is more or less to provide, in the code itself, some thoughts and ideas of where you can place guest parking, but it all has to fit together.
Okay.
And Planning and Zoning Board has to make that decision.
Right, and just for point of clarification, if I recall correctly to this specific project that everyone knows about, as I recall, they don't have sufficient driveway length there to park there, so it would be a non-issue in that particular case.
Whatever, okay, that's a different, people, that's a different story, but, okay. My question is answered, thank you, and it wasn't well articulated.
Well, I apologize.
No, no, it wasn't well articulated.
I didn't mean to punt, I didn't take it.
Yeah, it's all right, it's all right.
I'm gonna get the right answer for you.
Cut.
I think the big point here is that we're providing a few additional tools for our Planning and Zoning Department, our Planning and Zoning Board, that can, and we have good people on there. And because every site is different and unique, and without even using any specific site, this gives them the tools. Now, if we were to talk about a particular site that Mr. Dickerson is talking about, you know, that's what P&amp;Z is here for, and they're the ones who have been well versed on this, this is what they do for, you know, their part-time living, so to speak, so, and I think we can move ahead with this, and I think it's the best that we can have for this property, but those are two separate issues, but in this particular ordinance, let's move ahead.
No?
No, I'm very good.
Nothing else?
I'm.
Like a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
You first it, I second it, we're done.
There's been a motion to approve ordinance 2018-0966 and a second, all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes five-zero.
Mr. President, members of the City Commission, item number three is kind of a unique posture. This was proposed by the applicant when there was, when they were in initial determination that there was nothing in this code section that addressed two-story townhomes. You would not have both a permitted use and a conditional use for the same type of use, a two-story. Since you have passed the conditional use ordinance, my recommendation would be is that although you, we open up, we go through the process, we read it, you have the public hearing, but that you deny this, so that we close the book on this. The applicant is here, and I did talk with the attorney, both by phone yesterday, Mr. Dickerson away, and this evening, and they concur with that process, and they're the ones who did propose this ordinance as an initial step to address the issue with the site. So I'm going to need a motion to read, and we'll go through the process.
Motion to read, second.
In ordinance of City Commission, City of Lighthouse Point Florida, Amendment Chapter 42 Land Development Code, Article 4, Zoning, Division 4 District Regulations, Section 42, that's 344, RM 16, four-family residential districts of the City of Lighthouse Point Code of Ordinances to add two-story townhomes, excuse me, townhouses with a maximum number of attached units and maximum length of building as a permitted use in the RM 16 zoning district, providing for complex accessibility, codification, and effective date.
This is also a public hearing, so we'll open public hearing on ordinance number 2018-0965. If you want to breathe life into this ordinance, come forward and speak. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close public hearing, and Commissioners, would you like to discuss this or follow the advice of our city attorney?
I, unless it's somebody who wants to discuss something, I would offer, it makes sense, offer to pass this ordinance.
No.
Well, what I mean is, I thought you had to pass it to deny it.
You just deny it.
Okay, so I make a motion to deny it.
Second.
There's a motion to deny, there's a motion, second, to deny ordinance 2018-0965. City Attorney, you okay with this?
I am okay with it.
All right, there's a motion, a second. All in favor to deny this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
The ordinance dies, five-zero.
I just want, we just need to have the record closed.
We all have the same note.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a resolution appointing and reappointing members of the planning and zoning board. City Clerk?
Okay, we have, our planning and zoning board members are all up for renewal. We have three vacancies on the board right now. Bill Gallo and Cialle Migliore have resigned from the board, and Peter McDonough has been having some scheduling conflicts, so he's not going to be reappointed. All of the other members have been contacted and are willing to serve again for another year. So City Administration recommends reappointing Dennis Smith, Michael Cohen, and Fred McLean to serve as regular members, appointing Bill Gallo to serve as a regular member, moving Susan Motley from an alternate position to serve as a regular member, and appointing Mark Mackey and Kenton Haddick to serve as alternate members for the planning and zoning board.
Commissioners, we need...
I think it's a super-important board, so we got to make sure that we have the right people.
Do you want to read it, Mike? No? Okay. Discussion?
We're not going to read it.
Just to prove it.
Any discussion about...
I was going to say, I thought we had a good group of people here, so I think that another good opportunity to get also Mr. Gallo back on it. So a motion to approve.
I think it has to be said, though, I mean, when we have, you know, a two-to-one vote, and we have three people showing up, including alternates, you know, we have to look and say, this is a very important board, and you have to be here, and if we have to pull people off in the mid-season, let's do it, but, you know, having two back-to-back meetings, we have three people here, and we have alternates built into this thing, too, I mean, we shouldn't have this issue.
I would like to add one more alternative, but we can't do that because it's part of the charter, so we're going to have to deal with that.
Are we changing the charter?
Well, we, if the residents vote to change the charter, then we can do that. You're absolutely right, it was very disappointing, the last two meetings, the few people that showed up. Mr. Gallo had resigned because of a commitment he made with the County Historical Commission, and he realized that he really wants to serve with Lighthouse Point more, so Bill has asked to come back on. Mr. Mackey has been a longtime member of CIB, and he asked if he could do something a little bit different, and he promises to show up. And Mr. Haddick, who is sitting in the back of the room tonight, he has been involved in more things in this city than I care to think about, and he is one person that I can always rely on to show up, so we've known each other, Kenton and I have known each other a long time, and he is a very diligent individual.
I'd like to add to that, because I was appalled when I heard that these two meetings in a row only had three people, and so I think that, I know these people are dedicated that are on these boards, and they're all volunteers, and I know they have conflicts and all, but I think it's really, really important that the people that are on the boards now know, and then the new people that we're appointing, understand that, really, they have to make an effort to be there, because we have a lot of important issues on the horizon here in town, and we certainly need to have our boards fully attended so that they can come to the proper decisions.
Do we have a, kind of a list of expectation for our board members that they sign when they take over? To my knowledge, we've never had such a thing. It might not hurt. I mean, obviously, if you're not going to make a meeting, you need to identify that prior to X amount of hours, you're expected to be at every meeting, you know, if not, because if they don't have the expectations, how do we do it? I mean, it's a late agenda today, I'm not kind of, even though it could be the most important agenda item that's been added 20 years.
Generally, we have not had problems like this in the past. This has been unusual recently, and I'm confident with the folks that are being appointed and reappointed, that way we'll avoid those problems in the future.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Do you need to read?
Oh, sorry. Motion to read.
Second, oh, sorry, motion to read.
Second. A resolution of City Commission, City of Lighthouse Point Florida, reappointing Michael Cohen, Frederick McLean Jr., and Dennis Smith to serve as regular members, moving Susan Motley to serve as a regular member, appointing Bill Gallo as a regular member, and appointing Mark Mackey and Kenton Haddick as alternate members of the planning and zoning, on the planning and zoning board, providing board members with term of office and providing for an effective date.
Commissioners, further discussion?
I'll make a motion to pass.
A motion to pass Resolution 2018-2192.
Second.
Motion, we have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Kenton, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Make sure you show up, buddy.
It's a dream, it's part of the dream team now, there's a lot of, a lot of good people on that board. Resolution, appointing and reappointing members to the code enforcement board, back to our city clerk, Ms. O.
Thank you. So we do have some code enforcement board members who are also up for renewal. Ian McHarver has resigned from the board, which will leave a vacancy, and we do have an application on file for Everett Marshall. So City Administration recommends that the City Commission adopt the resolution, reappointing regular members Lori Milano, Nancy Nieto, and Dan Vargo, moving Jeffrey Fabita, who is the current alternate member, to serve as a regular member, and to appoint Everett Marshall to serve as an alternate member, and this would all be for a three-year term.
Do we have a motion to read?
Motion to read, number...
Second. A resolution of City Commission, City of Lighthouse Point Florida, reappointing Lori Milano, Nancy Nieto, and Dan Vargo to serve as regular members, moving Jeffrey Fabita to serve as a regular member, and appointing Everett Marshall to serve as an alternate member of the code enforcement board, reappointing members with a term of office and providing for an effective date.
Discussion, Commissioners, I know that Everett Marshall, he rarely shows up at anything.
I know.
Not the guy I'm worried about.
Definitely not the person about him showing up.
Who's this guy?
Actually, a quick story about Mr. Marshall. When he applied to the board, you know, he's very active in our recreation committee as well, and he is at just about every board meeting, but I did ask Tony Palmieri, our code enforcement director, about Mr. Marshall and being at the meeting, and he goes, oh, he pays attention, he's good by me. Once I got that recommendation, Everett, you were golden.
Okay. Commissioners, any discussion?
Well, good thing is Everett's got a background, because he has attention, that's always important.
That's right.
He has background in municipal government, he does attend basically every meeting the city has, so he's well-versed on what we're doing and working on and attempting to do in this city, so let's move forward.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-2193.
Second.
Motion, we have a second, I think Commissioner Maucker, Beaches.
Sure.
Mayor, motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes five-zero.
Welcome, Mr. Marshall.
Now he's like, what am I getting into?
Out of the year.
He's good.
We've already achieved Agenda Item Number Six. We are now up to Agenda Item Number Seven, Resolution approving an agreement and awarding the bid for tennis center drainage improvements, RFP 2018-004, Public Works Director, Tram.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, Mayor, as you likely know, during heavy rainfall events, the area around the tennis center ponds and floods tremendously, specifically northeast 27th Avenue and 34th Street. Clay from the tennis courts runs off the courts into the grass, across the street, into neighbors' yards. In an effort to resolve the situation, the city engineer was contacted, he developed a set of plans to manage the stormwater runoff and the clay. The plans will involve installation of some trench draining around the courts, swale construction along the green space areas to pretreat the rainwater runoff, drainage improvements to the pipelines that are existing, and some curbing construction. The city advertised for bids back in April, and the advertisement was out for a month, so on May 18th, we received the bids, and the bids were open, and I've included a tabulation of the bids in your agenda item and also included the bid tab sheet. Review committee was convened with myself, City Administrator Loviski, and Recreation Director Leasing, and proposals were reviewed. It was determined that DBF Construction was the most responsive, lowest bidder, and DBF has the experience and equipment necessary to do the project, and they've also performed work in the city in the past. They're presently working on the City of Pompano Beach reuse line right now, and they're coming to finish up their phase one, so it will be available. So at this point, we recommend that the City Commission adopt a resolution awarding the bid to DBF Construction and approving the agreement, authorize the expenditure of funds in the amount of $115,746 from the Stormwater Utility Fund, and authorize appropriate city staff to execute the necessary documents. We also ask for, recommend that the City Commission adopt a motion to authorize City Administration to use up to 10% contingency if necessary for undetermined events that may occur during construction.
Okay. Do you have a motion to read? I got a quick question here.
Yes.
Do you want to do a motion to read first, Mike?
How does this affect that current retention pond in the middle of the park? Do you have a vote or...
There's going to, the drainage structure in the middle of that will be updated, but otherwise, no, it stays there.
Is there a way we can get that land back for reuse?
We need, we need retention quantity. In fact, the swales along the street, they'll be a couple feet deep to retain that water. We need to pretreat a certain amount of the initial rainwater to remove contaminants, clay, and fertilizers and the other things.
Is that, is all part of a French drain system, or does it go ultimately into the...
It'll be piped, it won't be a French drain, because likely that would clog quickly with the clay, but it'll be piped to the retention areas and then it'll settle through the earth that way.
All the floors open, oh, correct, is AMB, all the floors open now, is AMB having questions?
Have they already started? I know there's some work being done right down the street from there.
No. There was work around the corner being done on 28th, that was for the church, there were tons in their fire line this week.
Oh, there's one actually down across on the south side of the tennis courts, there was some, some street work being done, some signs up, so I just wondered if that's right in the area there.
Yeah, right, as part of the, as part of that fire line installation, the detour, the signage was, I actually called the contractor about it, that basically that's what they're required by the DOT Series 600 is to put signs, signs all over the neighborhood. They're supposed to be finished today, I don't know if they paved at the end of today, but they're basically done except for the pavement, so those signs should go away.
All right.
Probably one by your house, too.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of signs.
Commissioner, I had a question about the other Commissioners. Anything, Commissioner Johnson? And I think you answered this, but can you tell me exactly what they're doing, like in the simplest possible form, in a non-engineering way, they're piping all the water that's collecting in front of the tennis center, basically, and piping it to that big ditch that Mike was talking about?
Okay, so we'll call that retention area.
That retention area? Yeah, that was the retention area.
We're going to make two more longer, skinnier retention areas, one on the south side and around the corner at 34th and 27th Avenue, and then up 27th Avenue in that big green space that's right of way.
Okay.
So that'll be dug out, and it'll be retention, it'll be a couple feet deep. We get a lot of retention there, because actually it's pretty wide. So then there'll be catch basins installed in both of those things, and they'll be connected with pipes, but the catch basins will be up from the grass, so the water has to collect to a certain level before it spills over and goes in, so that'll leave time for the clay and other contaminants to settle out, so theoretically cleaner water is on top, and it goes up, and then it spills in, and then it'll eventually end up in the retention area that's between the tennis and volleyball court. So the water that goes in there should be cleaner, so some of that clay that ends up in there should, should be cleaned up, and also there's a pipe that goes in there now, and it's undersized, so that'll all be improved. And then there's some, there's a little bit of paver work on the south side, and there's some sidewalk work, and that curbing will get fixed up, too.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Even I understood that.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Motion to read.
Second.
Sorry, Mike, I apologize. A resolution of City Commission, City of Lighthouse Point Florida, awarding the bid to DBF Construction LLC and approving an agreement for tennis center drainage improvements, RFP Number 2018-004, authorize the expenditure of funds, authorize the appropriate city officials execute the agreement and all necessary documents, providing for an effective date. And before you vote, I just want to remind you, there's, this is a two-part request, so if you adopt the resolution, this request is a separate motion to authorize the use of the contingent.
Commissioners, any further discussion? Chuck, you're still good with DBF? They've been doing good work in the city?
Yes. They're very responsive, you know, every contractor is going to have a hiccup now and then, but I must say, they respond immediately to requests.
And they put the bricks back down in the...
They did, they have some more work to do there that, they're not done.
If there's no further discussion, I would offer a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2195, awarding the bid to DBF. Does it move?
Second.
The motion, we have a second, Resolution 2018-2195, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes five-zero. We need a separate motion on the, on the, have a 10% contingency, thank you.
I would like to make a motion to, or to allow the City Administration the opportunity for a 10% contingency for the DBF Construction LLC Tennis Center Drainage Improvements.
Second. A motion, we have a second on that issue, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're working our way, we're working our way through the city on these retention issues. Agenda item number nine, I believe, but it is, Chief, eight, eight. Resolution approving 2017, 2018 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program Application, Chief Gil Martin.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Sean Gil Martin, Fire Chief. I'm here tonight to ask for a resolution approving 2017, 2018 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Regional Grant Application Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Lighthouse Point and the City of Pompano Beach for a Fire Station Alerting System. It's, it's a regional grant, there are several cities that are involved in it. In order to continue our participation in it, we need to have this resolution, this memorandum of understanding, sent over to Pompano that we are agreed to participate in the program. This alerting system is the, is the last piece of the puzzle that we need for the, for our fire department, for our P-25 compliance with the thing. We have our radios, we have our mobile radios, this is the, the radio inside the fire station that alerts, you know, sets off the tones and let everybody know that there's a call coming in. The grant is down to 8515, they're usually 9010, size of the city is of all the people[1782.23] that are involved in it. The AFG grant decided that they were gonna make it in an 8515 matching fund for the payment, as far as it goes for the payment. The other issue that you might see, if you look through the paperwork right there, is that the amount that's being allowed by the AFG grant is around $53,000. It's $53,281. The actual cost for our fire station to be done is $66,221.84. It, that is, it's a, it's something that was negotiated through the, by the county. This is actually bare bones, there's no extras in this alerting system at all. That, you know, they would start off, everybody thought it was gonna be a lot cheaper, and end up being a lot more. So this basically, our system is gonna give us the alerting system, it's gonna give us three speakers on the first floor, three speakers on the second floor, and four stations inside the entire bay. That's it. There's no other bells and whistles to it, but the price is still $66,000. So the city's total cost at the end of this is still gonna be $19,890. Yeah, if we get the grant, so.
You have a motion? Anything else, Chief? Any motion to read?
I'll motion read.
Second.
A resolution of the City Commission, City of Lighthouse Point Florida, approving a 2017, 2018 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program Regional Grant Application Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Lighthouse Point and the City of Pompano Beach for federal grant funding. Authorize appropriate city officials to execute the necessary documents, providing for an effective date.
Discussion, Commissioners. Commissioner Long.
What's the timetable on implementing this?
As soon as possible. As soon as we can get the grant, as soon as we can get, get the grant approved and, and get the funding, we're ready to move ahead. The whole, the whole in county has to be done. They keep moving it back, you know, quarters by quarters, but we got probably another year to go. But, but then that timeframe, when they do the cut over, they have to, over 100 stations that they have to do. So it's a, it's a matter of, we need to get in there and get it started. And what they do is, they'll, they place the system in, and then what they do is they'll have it so there's, it's a cutaway thing, so we'll have our older system, right, on one wall in there, the other one will be on the other side of the wall, and when it's time to cut it over, they'll just flip the switch and, and cut, cut it over.
Okay, and is this something that if we were to move forward with the new fire station, any approval from our residents, can you reinstall it over there, or are we spending another 66 plus?
We'll be able to, we'll be able to take the, the main alerting system part of it in there. The, the speakers and stuff like that would have to be reconfigured to whatever is gonna be in for the station, but depending on how the layout of the station, whether it's, you know, what the rooms are down on the first floor, you know, what's on the second floor, and the sides of the bay, things, all those different things will be, be in there, but...
So you have a main component?
The main component of the, yeah, the main body of the thing is, 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 you know, that big.
Is it expandable then, to handle two?
Absolutely. You could, you could put all kinds of things on there if you like.
Thanks.
That was my question. Mine, too.
Mr. President? All those questions are great, I just wanna know how we could fit it into this current grant, 'cause the next step for the, you know, if our residents do approve the bond, or bondage, we do build a new fire station, we will then not be able to get 85% of this taken care of. So we are missing out. I wish there was an opportunity for us to state something like, hey, this is what the fire station is gonna look like, this is what we're planning for. I understand we can't, but I'm just saying, it is nice when we do have these style grants where we're able to get, especially the AFG grants, that allow us to get 85%, hopefully we keep our eyes open for, if there's another round of, you know...
Should be.
Hopefully there'll be another round for it, 'cause it's gonna come, it's gonna come quick.
We're, we're, we're trying to get in, like, with the group of the cities that we're, that we're with Pompano, these, these other cities that are trying to get in. Other people are still gonna be behind, I'm sure, like the county. The county's got all their stations, and like I said, this is a bare bone, you know, that we're getting. Most of these things are, they're over $100,000, most of these other stations that they're putting in. So, I know Lauderdale Station, for example, their station that they built over there, their, their one station was $90,000 on the minimum thing there, so.
Wow.
And I mean, some of these people have got prices of $150,000, $160,000 per station.
If there's no further discussion from the commission, I would offer a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2196, Regional Grant Application. We have a motion, we have a second, Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Final Agenda Item of the night, Agenda Item Number Nine, A Resolution Approving an Agreement to Purchase for the Purchase and Sale of Real Property Located at 2101 Northeast 36th Street and 3670 Northeast 21st Way. City Attorney, Swirly.
Mr. President, members of the City Commission, at the last City Commission meeting, the City Commission authorized the city administration to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement for the property which you just described, for a purchase price of 1.75 million dollars. The agreement has been negotiated, it is here for you, for your consideration this evening. It does provide for purchase price of 1.75 million dollars, it provides for 60-day inspection period for the city to go through due diligence. City decides not to purchase the property, can terminate the contract anytime prior to the end of the term inspection period, and initial deposit, which was only $1,000 to authorize at the last meeting, would be returned. City will obtain the survey and legal description and have to pay its designated closing costs. If the 60-day inspection period goes well, then the closing goes within 15 days after the expiration of the inspection period, which would, if approved this evening, make the closing somewhere around the end of August. So it's here for your consideration. The document that was placed in the agenda, we did receive late yesterday, some requests of changes from the seller's attorney, which is acceptable to our, us, I just wanna go through it real quick. You have been provided, I think, a copy of the redlined changes. On page six, Section 3.4 of the document has been stricken, that was the one that required the City Commission to approve the contract during the inspection period. Since you are approving the contract tonight, that paragraph is not needed. The next change is on page nine of the document. There's a paragraph 4.5, which talks about seller's representations about interest in the property. The seller wanted to add that they have provided oral licenses for folks to park their vehicles on the property, and that he will be terminating those prior to closings, and all licensees will have vacated the property before closing. At 4.6, the seller does have it under, with a listing agent. He does not want to be prohibited from getting back up contracts, since it's basically taking the content, property off the market for up to 75 days, but any contracts he would enter into would have to be conditioned on this one being terminated by us. And then the last change is on page 18, which is, again, goes back to the fact that he does have a broker. He wanted to make clear that the representation of the real estate commission is that there is a broker involved, that he has a contract with Caldwell Banker, but they are not entitled to a commission on this transaction, and that there are no other agents involved in this. And the language was not changed in this paragraph that provides for him to identify this, and it was harmless if someone claimed a commission on this transaction. So those were the changes from the document you have. We do have a signed agreement from the developer, which, the one with the changes that I just went through this evening, so if you were to approve it this evening, it could be executed tonight, the due diligence period could start tomorrow. I would take it back to the office, we are, the city attorney's office will serve as the escrow agent for the transaction, so I would need to have that signed off by Mr. Duty in my office, who's a real estate agent, escrow agent, and I'm ready to answer any questions you have.
Motion to read, Commissioners?
Motion to read.
Second.
A resolution of the City Commission, City of Lighthouse Point Florida, approving the agreement for the purchase and sale of real property for property located at 2101 Northeast 36th Street and 3670 Northeast 21st Way. Authorize the city administration to take all steps necessary to purchase the real property, and authorize the city officials to execute all necessary documents related to the purchase. Final conflicts have a voting effective date.
Commissioners, discussion? Commissioner Mocker? Yeah, I'm just curious, Caldwell Banker, Caldwell Banker not getting a commission, we're not gonna get in the middle of a dispute between those folks, are we? You sound like a lawyer, Commissioner Mocker. Well, I would hope not. Maybe I'm running off on there. I, I, I would hope not, I would assume that his contract with them was non-exclusive in that if he did something on his own, he would not be responsible, but we've not seen that in the agreement, so we're basing it on his representations. All right. Commissioners?
Motion passed.
Well, I have, sorry, Commissioner Long. How, like, my question is, if, if for some reason the, the environmental or something goes, goes south and, and we elect to terminate, I know there's already been environmental done, and, and just, you guys know me by now, how would, is, is it gonna be the city administration that would terminate the agreement? Would it be brought back to the commission for discussion about that? And then it would be brought to the commission to confirm termination agreement, because you're authorizing it to DBF. So we wouldn't have to call a special meeting if that... Not wishing that, but I just wanted to ask, ask the question. So, I'm good. Just a good point that was brought up in here, is that there's a lot of people use that for parking and leaving their vehicles there, so it'll become under the authority of the city and will have to enforce law regulations.
Well, they'll be, they'll be released before we get it.
They have to be gone.
They have to be gone before we close.
I know that's what it says, but I also know that people use it.
Well, the condition, you know, that they'd have to satisfy by closing.
They have to provide a stoplights or something. Anyway, this is a great deal, and I'm ready to move. I think this is thrilling.
Motion passed.
Second. We have a motion to pass, and a second of 2018-2197. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Commissioners. Many years. That is the last of our agenda items. We will now go to public requests from the floor. This is open mic time, so any issues you would like to discuss, I see they're already lining up, so we'll open public requests, and first up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Trilisi, 3810, 27th Ave. I'm here to make you aware of the situation in a part of our city. There are an inordinate number of power outages occurring in a certain area. That area is roughly between 46th Street, 44th Street, from 31st Avenue to 22nd Avenue. This has been going on for years. I do not live in that area, but my daughter Lisa Trilisi, who's here tonight, does, and asked me to serve as a liaison between the residents of that area and the commission, since she knows I have a big mouth.
I was gonna say, she picked a pretty odd, uh, olive branch.
Well, she's a little shy. Just don't get her angry, because Callaway will look like a firecracker. Power outages, that's where I was. What my daughter did was, she put a petition together, and she posted it on next door. In a matter of a few hours, she had dozens of people signing up. She also had scores of people saying, attaboy, offering suggestions, et cetera, noting that the problem does exist and has existed for a very long time. It's my understanding Commissioner Long saw the posting and took some action, for which we thank you. We did hear, she did hear from FPL, a gentleman named Alan Furt Hill. He said they've identified the problem, which is amazing to me, because everybody else they spoke to kept telling them, no, check your circuit breakers, we don't see any signs of an outage, and this is while everybody's standing in the dark over there. Again, I repeat, this has been going on for years. About two weeks ago, the power went out four times in one week. What FPL referred to as momentary outages. Well, momentary lasted three hours, four hours, et cetera. I don't consider that momentary, I don't think you do either, but this is a longstanding, continuing problem, and it's got to the point of where these people are fed up. Mr. Fratell said they've identified the problem, and he said they have to change some of the underground wiring. I was not aware we had underground electrical wiring in city. Do we?
In certain sections, there is some underground wiring.
In the area in question, could there be?
I don't know for that area in question, but I know there are a couple of areas, and...
Right up at that end there.
There's one, there's one at the end, there's another one along 48th Street, there's a couple of different areas, and they're having problems, because apparently salt water's gotten into some of that underground water and wiring, and they're having to do some digging.
Well, it's interesting, 'cause the complaints that have been registered over the years have been met basically on deaf ears.
Well, there's another problem, there's a lot, there's a vegetation problem, too. There's trees that are brushing up against the tire, fire line, the power lines, I should say, and I actually received an email from FPL about it this morning, that they're looking at having to trim several trees and remove possibly multiple trees. Apparently people have planted trees where they're not supposed to be. Surprise, surprise. There is at least one property owner that has advised FPL they are going to go to City Hall and fight for their trees, which they're welcome to do. I don't know who that property owner is, but I will, I was gonna say this later in the meeting, but I'll go ahead and say it now. At our next commission meeting, representatives of FPL will be here.
So will I.
And you will have a chance to address them directly. They are supposed to also be bringing a vegetation manager. One of the things they will be discussing is the areas of the city that we have some vegetation problems in, and hopefully coming up with a plan to correct them, recognizing that we are on hurricane season, that needs to be corrected. I'd asked them to deal with it back in January, but like anything else, it takes a little longer than it should. Commissioner Long, I know, was also in contact with FPL, because part of the email was, they had heard from him as well.
Yes, we're aware of it. And we thank you again.
So, at the end of the day, the city has very little authority over FPL, it's really the Public Service Commission, but we do have contacts we can reach out to, and they are generally responsive, not always 100% responsive, and it takes longer than, than it should many times, but I know that they were, had a crew out there last Friday, and they had another crew out there, I believe, yesterday, where they were actually counting trees to determine what needs to be trimmed and what needs to be removed.
All right, it's all very interesting, because the stories over the years have been entirely different from what you're describing.
We have, we have found that most intermittent outages, as they refer to them, even though they may be three hours, that is intermittent in their world, is caused by vegetation issues.
The, the trees and the leaves hitting the wires?
Yeah. If you look at the trees, and it's got burnt, burnt fronds on the palm...
Oh, I know, I had the, my trees, bought the house, the trees were already there.
Yeah.
Don't blame me. But I've had them trimmed, so they don't hit the wires anymore.
So, yeah, when I, I did see that, and I didn't realize you had a problem, but I reached out to FPL, and, and the same thing was true, and I will say from my personal experience, because I planted, I've been in my house for a long time, and I planted palm trees, and probably closer to the wires than they should have, I never thought they'd last this long. They were dying after five to seven years, never made it that close.
I never thought I'd last this long.
And you're still going strong, just like my palm, so, I mean, I, I know what it's like to have that, because also there's a couple houses down, and we know it's a vegetation problem. With your area, too, there was a switch problem, and that was a big piece of it, but I would just say to your neighbors, let's take a walk, and kind of see what you can do, and FPL and others have easements, and, you know, it's either, basically it's what, 10 feet on each line, on each side of the line, and Broward County's been pushing not to have anybody plant anything there, and we have not really enforced that over the years. It's, I mean, it's been something FPL has wanted for years. We didn't enforce it, because it really does take probably half the trees out of Broward County, out of Lighthouse Point. And I said, I'm guilty, I pay about $2,000 a year to get my palms trimmed back, especially in my backyard where my wires are, so the palm tree goes this way, and this is all cut off. It's not pretty, but I prefer at least some palm tree than no palm tree.
And power.
And power, yeah.
Well, I went to the, to the trouble of hiring Bartlett, the tree experts, to come and do all my palms, because they were hitting the wire, with sparks out there. I had that all...
And your wires are in the front, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause you got those there. The other problem that happens a lot in, in the city, is the, the gate, what they have is kind of like a big lever, like the old power circuit, circuit breaker's snapping it in, that when there is a major outage, you're gonna hear that transformer pop, that gate swings open, and they have to manually get up there with a big stick and pop it back, and after a while, the, like, circuit breaker fuse gets worn, and so it pops easier. So they're checking that as well, in your neighborhood, because sometimes it doesn't take that much force to pop, and then you're out of power. So those are kind of like the three big pieces that they had, the switch, the gate, and of course your vegetation up and down, and we have that throughout the city.
Well, I'm gonna present you with this petition, and you'll note, if you read some of the comments here, people have said things like, there's been a transformer by my house that's been buzzing for six months, that shouldn't be normal, they're not supposed to buzz, that kind of thing.[1755.08] You might get some fodder for further conversations with FPL.
Yeah, and I think he's monitoring that at this point.
Now, I'm next door.
I'm next door.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Mocker.
I think we have this unusual opportunity next meeting with FPL representatives because as you know, Jim, they speak out of both sides of their mouth all too often. I would save a copy of that petition for them.
Well, we'll have to make one, I only have one. You have another?
I would give them that petition and let them know.
Well, I'll give you this while I have another one for the next meeting.
I think anything you can do to hold them accountable while they're in a public forum like this is going to help.
All right, that's a good suggestion, thank you. And they do speak out of two sides of their mouth. They tell you a different story every time you talk. I just went through another thing that's unrelated.
I'm aware of that.
As I refer to them, frequent power losses, FPL.
Commissioner Mocker.
No, I just, I just want to say two quick things. First of all, obviously, the whole power outage thing and the vegetation, I know FPL works diligently and they're trying and like you said, talk out two sides of their mouth, but one of the things that's important, I think, and as you said, is that, listen, this has been a habitual problem for multiple years. I mean, granted, I've only been up here four years and other folks have been up here longer, but again, this is the first time we're hearing about it. So, you know, although our power might not be great, although we do have other contacts that are usually very quick to be reached out to and actually give us some sort of feedback, and I think that that's important. So I echo this, not just on this occasion, but on any occasion, that if you feel there's been an issue here, please contact us. I mean, every one of our phone numbers are up there, email addresses are up there, and we don't have quite the social media presence. I'm lucky for Commissioner Long to be on next door and was able to respond. I don't have next door, so, you know, if Commissioner Long wasn't on there, we could have been caught cold footed, cold foot this evening.
Well, I wish I had caught cold foot, it's much more fun.
Well, you know, but it's unfortunate because we don't want you to have the problem and then we at least start off.
You understand, we're not blaming the city for this. We're asking the city.
No, 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 we're not taking it that way.
Because you have more clout than a single individual of us. Now, if 50 people marched on FPL with thickened signs, that's another story, and I might tell them that might happen next week for our next meeting. When is the next meeting, by the way?
June 26th.
26th. One last question on the subject. Is there a separate substation that services that area as opposed to the rest of the city? Do you know?
I'm not sure what, which line that comes in on. There's, the city gets its power from three or four different locations.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
And like the north side of the city, North 39th Street comes in from Deerfield, but I'm not sure where you come in from.
Because maybe it's that substation has something to do with it as well.
Probably come in off sample.
Whatever. Okay, I'll give you this.
Let me give you the card. Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our.
Thank you very much, thanks for talking.
While we're on the subject of electricity, I did bring up a power pole that was leaning, as I said, 15 degrees of starboard in front of 3800, northeast 27th Ave. It's still leaning, it's still cracked, and we're in hurricane season.
We told them.
I know you did, maybe. Well, we'll bring that one up.
Bring it up too.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jim.
Public comment remains open. Anybody else?
George, come up for the twofer.
Yeah, twofer. It's not going to be long, don't worry. George Cassis, 3312, northeast 29th. With Mr. Trulisi, huge problem point, my next door neighbor Fred McLean. At 2:00 in the morning, a FPL truck comes to our house, shining lights in my son's room. My son, hey, somebody's here. I go out and ask him what's going on. They go, none of your business, mind your own business. I go, excuse me? Just wanted to let you know that. And they were out there putting a temporary wire from my hand box or whatever they call it in the ground, on the ground, over to Fred's, they had to replace his wire. Now, I didn't even know that he was connected to my ground box because we built our house five years ago. Just wanted to let you know how FPL, now they want to dig up my yard, all down my side to go to his house. So we have a call in to Mr. Fratill. Saying no, but I talked to him and he gave me a lip service. I'm not that very happy with the man. So, anyway, just wanted to let you know.
George, are they building, are they doing this in the easement?
Well, it's in between the.
Right, it's probably in the easement then.
Well, I mean, it's in between lots, but instead of going in his property for his line, they're going in my property.
Yeah, on your survey, there's probably an easement which gives them the right to do that.
I'm not saying that they don't have the right, I'm asking.
They don't have to be rude about it.
They don't have to be rude about it. Well, no, it's just, it's just the fact that it's his property, and I've talked to Fred, we're working it out, you know, trying to figure it out. I think they just don't want to go, because it's easier to go down my side. Anyway, but I have a piling where the gate is, so good luck going through that. But anyway, one more thing.
Could I comment on your thing? I would just say that at a house, like parent mom's old house, they had to do the same thing, but they had to come in around because they had to bring in some stuff, but they repaired 100% of it. I mean, I even had, you know, spots where they brought in a pole, repaired all of it. They will do that, but they will find the easiest point of entry.
They did say they will, and the reason why I ask is, when I talked to FPL, they go, well Viking does that for us. I go, well Viking represents you, I'm dealing with you, I'm the customer. I said, you're using a sub as a bumper. What do I know about them? Why don't you send somebody out and look at the situation instead of Viking? Anyway, that's not really why, just Mr. Trulisi brought up a point that I thought I'd bring it up. The main thing I worry about, again, is safety. I don't know if it's, do you guys do the trees? If you're coming down, going northbound on Lighthouse Drive approaching 39th Street, from Sample to 39th, look up and see if you can see the signals. If you can't, the trees are just all in the way. If you know what I'm saying, you know, you can't see the light coming up.
The branches.
The branches are just really thick, you know, with all the rain and all the growth. So if we could, for safety purposes, we don't want somebody to run through and hit somebody because that light changes so fast, which hopefully we can get the county or they do, does the county do the lighting? County to come in and fix our lights at Sample and Lighthouse Drive and 39th and Lighthouse Drive. It'd be nice if the sensors worked properly, especially at 11 o'clock at night when you're sitting there for however many minutes because it doesn't switch.
You know, the sensors are up above and the branches may be causing the sensors to be.
The sensors are on the ground.
No, they have sensors up top.
On the master. Now they have the sensors for the cars are on the pole?
Yeah.
Well. I mean, Officer Paul knows I got pulled over one night, they said I ran a red light and the light was, it switched within two seconds. It was just, my son goes, Dad, you just went, I said, what? I said, he goes, no, it was yellow, but it just turned. Okay. Nothing I could do and I got pulled over for it. And it's just, it just switches just like that, but the trees are very.
Mr. Stuck?
If the light's yellow, you gotta hit the gas.
That's right.
Public comment remains open. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Communications from commissioners.
Kyle, first of all, just want to say that we had a memorial shrine.
Very nice.
It was an amazing, awe inspiring dedication ceremony that Chuck worked very hard on and the ability that we had for all the little things that occurred there between the bagpipes, the bugler, the flyover. It was just amazing and truly does show why Lighthouse Point earlier is so special and why, you know, why we are what we are. So I think that's super, it was an amazing time, I still am awestruck over it. I got an email from a resident the other day regarding some tiki huts, just discussion on tiki huts. I know, I'm sure probably everybody else got that email also. But the email was jastically stating, hey, listen, I live on a dry lot house and currently the ordinance reads for me to only, or allows for only 150 square foot tiki hut within the side setbacks, house setbacks and so on and so forth. And this person said, listen, I have a yard, a larger yard, and I would like a larger tiki hut. And ultimately, again, I started thinking about it and again, I come back to the thing is we're, if they're within their setbacks for their side and their rear setbacks and they're within the height requirement, the 15 foot height requirement that we require, why are we dictating the size of the person's tiki hut? Obviously, the idea originally was we were worried about the waterfront homes and obstructing view, but if it's in someone's backyard and it's within their setback, I struggle with understanding maybe if we should have such a small requirement because 150 square foot tiki is actually not that big. So, I just brought it up and I wanted to see what any of the commissioners felt about this. I spoke to the property owner today. Apparently they started construction before they got permits and there's two different sizes they gave me. One is it's a 20 by 15 tiki hut and another size dimension was 17 by 14, so somewhere between 240 and 300 square feet. They had said they might come to the commission meeting tonight, they weren't sure, but that's what it came down to is they had started construction prior to pulling permits. I guess some tiki hut company had come to them and said, oh, you don't need permits, you don't need anything, you can do whatever you want with these things. And I guess that's where they are. I kind of explained the process if they wanted to go through a zoning appeal, which they did not want to do. So I'm going to be talking to them again later on this week to find out what their thought process is as to how they want to move forward. But as you might recall, Kyle, I think that ordinance was passed when you first came on the commission, but that took a year of hearings. Oh, I don't disagree, I'm not, I'm not actually going for the specific property, I'm just thinking in the grand scheme of things, is that, that's a pretty small tiki. I mean, when you start to think about it on a dry lot size, side of it, and the fact is that the person has a large lot or they don't have a pool and they have the ability to put it within their setbacks, do we necessarily need to dictate how big they can be? Again, I'll leave that up to the commission. I just deal with what I'm dealt with.
I think that, as Glenn said, we chased this round for a long, long time and this is what was decided upon after many, were you here?
Oh, yeah, I was here. I actually didn't vote for it, actually. I didn't, I didn't vote for it because I thought, again, we were being very restrictive on the people that had dry lot houses. And again, majority of the people that enjoy their large tiki huts, that were pre-approved prior to this ordinance being in effect, have larger tiki huts than that. And it's unfortunate that we are restricting these folks from building the same tiki huts as their neighbors, which were legal at that time period, and they don't interfere with any of the side setbacks, don't necessarily interfere with the house. I just, again, I bring that up.
Actually, Kyle, prior to the ordinance passing, tiki huts were not allowed in Lighthouse Point.
Actually, they were, and mine was permitted, including multiple other ones.
Yours was on a dry lot, yours was different.
I just said dry lot.
I thought you said something.
No, I said dry lot specifically.
Was there any, and that was passed before I was up here, was there any discussion about the aspect of one, like one size fits all for all lots? I don't know, this is a long time ago, so maybe nobody remembers, but that does seem odd to me if somebody's got an extra big lot, but they've got, they're limited to the same size as somebody that might have a smaller one.
The discussion was an ascertainable standard and planning and zoning heard it multiple times and they kept coming back to the 150 square feet as being a reasonable amount, giving an ascertainable standard within the city of Lighthouse Point. I don't know if there were, I don't recall if there was much further discussion than that.
I think the intent was to establish some sort of continuity because we had everything going every which way and without any standards and it was getting absolutely out of control and we figured we need to come in and establish a standard that was aesthetically proper and all of the other issues that involved and then came up with a standard that we found acceptable. And the problem was at the time that everybody was freelancing all kinds of different things and we wanted to bring some sort of continuity to the process, so that's why it was decided. I don't remember exactly why, the specific, the specific square footage, but we were getting everything, you know, kitchens and bathrooms and fountains and lights and we finally said, look, we got to come up with something and establish a standard going forward so we would be able to tell people what was expected and then enforce it.
And Fire Chief Donzella had a lot of opinions too about.
Safety of.
Safety and the distance from the roof line and all that. He was, he was in quite, in the middle of this, in our choices of the sizes and all that.
And concerned about height as well, because the higher you go, the greater the fire hazard he indicated, something like that. So there were a lot of considerations that went into it.
Anybody else, anything else, anybody have anything?
Also, you know, I got a lot of texts, just like probably everybody else, when we had the rainstorms and as bad as it was, was it last Tuesday or Tuesday before?
Last Tuesday.
I think every, every place in Lighthouse Point was flooded, but amazingly by 10:30 and walking around, everything was dry. I realized that, you know, the drains were working properly, there was just no place for that volume to go.
It's amazing if those drains, I mean, my street 47th, which usually never floods, we're lucky, was up to my calf and it was because both those drains were completely blocked. I was, we've all done it before, but once you clean those drains, it's amazing how quick they go.
Just do it by hand, do it with a rake. Get a dirt rake, but yeah, ours were working. I mean, you could just tell there's the whirlpool effect, but it was just so much. And it was kind of high tide around that time as well, so, you know, but it was amazing by 10:30 it did drain. Of course, we still got a couple of low lying areas in the city, it's probably still wet. But, you know, then people going, oh, thanks, Mike, like I turned on a pump or something, you know? But it was amazing amount of rain we've had and we've had about three months of this. So I thought it was kind of amazing how quickly that did drain, as much rain as we had and just sat over Lighthouse Point.
Where I was, I get three inches a year.
Speaking of rain, let's all pray for no rain because summer camp starts tomorrow. I'm wishing our rectorate of the best of luck, especially with some one seven year old named Madeline Joffe, he got your hands full. So good luck on a successful summer camp. I, yeah. And I saw that the videos are back up online. Thank you.
We have found a service that will close caption in the interim period, our videos, and we are putting money in the budget for a permanent solution starting October 1st.
Because I was, I was, thanks, so, thank you.
We have a temporary solution, it's not perfect, but.
Well, that was my question, that was my question because I watched one video and I started watching it and the closed caption was perfect. They got their Buzzkirk rake, they got Joffe, every word was perfect. And then I watched another one and it, I mean, it was good, but it wasn't perfect. So is somebody correcting them or is Jennifer all reading it?
No, it's a service, it's a service we set out to. It took some research to find them.
I was reading this thing, they're like, you got damn Buzzkirk rake, nailed it.
We tested out, they're not perfect, but you know something? It gets us through an interim period, so going forward, we will have them done and then come October 1st, in the future, we're putting money to have a permanent solution.
Okay, well, that's great to hear, especially now with things going before the residents is great. Speaking of that, I would, I think I brought this up before, as we go into these charter items later on in the summer and early fall, I would like to, and it's maybe just me, maybe I could run something with the city attorney, I would like, and kill two birds with one stone, like in-person ethics training about what we can and can't say about, like what the rules are, if that's something that you guys could do.
Something that can be done, we can schedule it before our commission meeting.
Could we do it, could we do it before the second commission meeting in August, immediately before that meeting, an hour or two?
I don't see why not.
Because I think that would be very timely in terms of when we'll be putting the push on.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, we'll work on setting that up. We'll do a, an hour, two hours, how long would you?
One or two, just let us know what you think's appropriate.
We need two in-person ones, so we can fill two hours, I'll take it when I can get it. One other, one other, one other thing, I saw somebody post something, this is hitting gear and gear to my heart because I'm in the process of evaluating possibly having to do some work on my C wall and my dock because it's time, and I saw somebody post something on Facebook about their neighbor was putting in a new, I don't know if they were putting in cap and batter, they're putting in a new C wall and because of our requirements that new C walls be higher, that, and it might have just been that contractor or just fate, but the C wall of their neighbor kind of did damage and was putting pressure on the neighbor's C wall because it was lower and maybe more weight and more concrete, so that kind of hit home to me. So I don't think we can fix that, but it's something that they suggested that when we kind of give permits for that kind of stuff, that we at least take into consideration or see if we can address. I just thought it was an interesting point. I don't know the engineering behind it.
Well, I will tell you, I was at the climate resilience conference a few weeks ago that the county held and they are actually going to be coming out with a recommendation to raise C walls even higher than what we've done.